Hi, Charlene, hi, Sonia.
Hey.
Hey, Ms. Lynn, how are you? I'm well, how are you? I'm doing well, my lady. Thank you.
Hi, Sonia.
Hey, Ms. Shaw, how are you?
I'm fine.
Good girl.
We're the only three on it.
So far.
You know, I don't have my camera on. Oh, my face looks oily.
Yours. Mine is oily.
Mine's not like that. Fine, mine looks, oh. It was like I had a real time. Let me fix up a little bit.
It's just fine.
I'm like, oh, everything's oily. Hey, Sean Brown. Rambo.
I'm here. I made him miss and catch the boss. I must've missed the boss.
Oh, well, that would be good.
Rambo.
It's a short boss, too.
Okay.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon.
Char, wait, can you, um, can you let this allow the settings, allow me to share my screen? Please?
Let me see if I can figure that out. Okay, try now. You're muted, Sean. Can you, can you share?
Yes. Um, if, if, if it, when I do have to share, if your, your, the agenda will, you know, they can only see one image at a time.
Right. Now, that's just a, um, a guideline, it's not a requirement. Hi, Rich, I see ya.
Hello, everyone.
I may, uh.
Hello.
Can you make that bigger or no?
To my agenda.
Whatever's on here now, and it could be just that I can't see that well, it might just be me.
No, it's probably the font, let me, um. Let me see here.
I mean, I just had to get like this. I was trying, I thought I could have made it bigger from on my end, but I, I.
That's not how I was able to do mine, Shaw. I was able to.
Make on your end?
Yes, uh-huh.
Okay, let me see, cuz I, that. I can't see anything. You didn't change anything, you just made, you just. Um, as if I was on there like pinching the order.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
All right, I'll, I'll see. I need to get it again, now where is it?
I'm gonna try sharing again and see if, um, is this better? Where did it go? That a little better for you?
Um, it's, it's a little better. Um, I mean, I can see what it is.
Yeah, I can see it too.
Just be sitting up close though. I'm trying to make it, I don't know where I can stretch this. It's fine.
All right, so we can go ahead and get started.
Yes, yes.
Shame, you can't see.
I've now, what you mean?
Look, my grandmother told me getting old is a trip, is what she said.
Oh, yes, it is.
All right, let's see, um. Sharon, is everyone present?
Let's see, I think everyone's here except, um, Ron and Jonathan. I know Ron said that he may be.
Uh, I just got on.
Oh, okay, there goes, uh, Jonathan, I'm sorry, how are you?
Okay.
I'm good, how you doing?
Good.
All right, everyone, thank you for joining our work session this evening. Um, let me say this before we get started, I did not plan on being here all night, this should be an hour. So, let's stay on topic, get through, get through each item, and then we can all go and do what we do in the evening time. Um, in accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, chapter two thirty-one, P dot L nineteen seventy-five, notice of this work session meeting was posted on the Borough of. Signed for that purpose, notice was also posted on the Borough of Pinzbro website at www dot Pinzbro dash NJ dot org and was emailed to the official newspapers provided by Resolution. Additionally, in response to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID nineteen, this December fourteenth, two thousand and one, meeting is held via Zoom online meeting platform. Everyone, I'd ask you to place your, your right hand over your heart and say the pledge of allegiance with me. The flag of the United States of America. For which is. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam clerk, can you do roll call, please?
Councilman Carter.
Here.
Councilman Giordano.
Any roll call for this?
Yes.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Council President Minstein.
Here.
Councilman Rambo.
Here.
Councilwoman Scarpese.
Here.
We have a call.
Great. Okay, um, discussion items, the first one, audit corrective action plan. Um, I believe Shaw, is Steve on here?
No.
Okay, Sean, um, could you provide an update for us, please?
Yes, I just wanted to first say good evening to everyone, and, um, I just saw this agenda around eleven thirty this morning, and as the administrator, the staff here, we all have stuff we've already had planned to work on today, which we did work through. Um, it would be helpful for work sessions if things like this just could be shared more earlier, so that we have more time to prepare, so the council has all the information that you request. With that said, with the corrective action plan, um, I'll just walk you through where we are and how we got here. The corrective action plan.
We've got an hour.
Excuse me?
Continue, Sean, continue.
Well, maybe whoever put this on the agenda, they could just, I mean, do you have a question about it?
No, I just said, Sean, we only have an hour.
Sean, can you continue so we can get through these items?
The corrective action, um, the corrective action plan, um, has to be written in response to the two, uh, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty audits. Uh, most of the findings are fairly similar. Um, we went through a few phases in the administration, we talked, um, I personally talked to Fred, our auditor, to just get his ideas about the issues that were addressed in the audit. Um, I also talked to all of the senior staff, the leadership team, because most of, I would say probably about half of the things on the audit deal with staffing issues and who is making deposits, um, into bank accounts and how ledgers are kept. Um, with a new deputy clerk, Ms. Williams, um, is, she has her strategy in place of how they're gonna do that work. Steve and Erica have their strategy in place of how they do their stuff, and the court system has their strategy in place. So Steve is in the process of, he has to, he has to do some reconciliations. Uh, he did payroll, he has to reconciliation some pension work tomorrow. Um, and then we have to, he has to update the budget, so we, so we know how much money we have in each account. And after that, he's gonna take the first crack at the corrective action plan. I was hoping to have it presented to council by the twenty-first, for the twenty-first council meeting, but I actually unfortunately think that's unlikely now, so it'll probably be more so early January. And with this and all the other, the other fifteen issues, um, as always, I'm more than happy to discuss these things in committee.
Okay, um.
I have a specific question.
Hold on, one second. One second, um, Councilwoman Scarpese, Rob has had some computer issues, so he said we could give him a second to, to work that out. So, give us a second, please. Irene, go ahead with your questions.
Okay, am I unmuted?
Uh, yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, there was, uh, three categories, one was the separation of duties, which I hear that you addressed. The other one was reconciliation of some accounts, which specifically, I think, um, some of the fixed asset accounts were, um, listed. And then the third item was the outstanding loan, and I think Rob was gonna take care of that, is that true?
There is a strategy for all of these, for all of these things, I mean, I don't know if you guys want me to go point by point, or what that strategy is.
You addressed two. What, what about the third? Is Mr. Tarver handling that one?
I don't, I wasn't hearing what you said the third one was.
Who's Mr. Tarver now?
Hello, can anyone hear me?
Yes.
Kinda low, Rob, though.
On, on the audit plan, there was a loan that had to be addressed, um, were you taking on that?
My recommendation is, um.
I'm back, I'm here, I think I can deal with it now, it's a little better, hello, can you hear me?
You're not, you're not muted, Mr. Tarver.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Go on and continue.
So, Mr. Tarver, so, the first item on the agenda, what I'm trying to do is just give us a quick update, I don't wanna.
Gotcha, gotcha.
We worked out in committees, but I do want to give a status, a quick update for each item. And the first item we're talking about is the, uh, corrective action plan. Um, and Sean has, has addressed two of the items, the third one is the outstanding balance, um.
On a loan.
Yeah, the, the.
Mr. Tarver, before you speak, I talked to Eric Myers today, and I feel like you and I should confer before, um, discussing any further.
I'm not sure that we should be mentioning names.
Well, why don't we do this, uh, you and I can talk offline, and then maybe we can fill people up on, uh, as we go along, a little later, makes sense?
Thank, thank you.
You, you and who, uh, Mr. Tarver, I'm just taking.
Sean.
Okay, okay, all right.
Counsel.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item is the trash contract.
Okay, I have sent over, uh, copies of the, uh, agreement for council to look at in their email today. Essentially, there's not much change in that, uh, we pretty much agree that what we're gonna have to do is we've looked at these different items and the, the problems, uh, that we have. And we're going to have to realistically, uh, kind of decide whether or not we want to continue with them or to move in a different direction. I've spoken, uh, to several of you about, uh, other municipalities and what we might be able to do, but we have to begin in January toward putting together either a new agreement, number one, with Carney's Point, a hybrid agreement with Carney's Point, which is a hybrid with Carney's Point and some other municipality to separate the services, trash and others, or number three, to X out Carney's Point altogether and have our own, uh, service contract with another municipality. So that's where we are.
Miss, Mr. Tarver, I called the Improvement Authority today, they didn't understand what I was talking about with the licensing fees.
You're talking about the, uh, the tipping?
Mm-hmm, but when I was talking to them, they were like, we don't know what you're talking about.
Really?
I thought that was kinda curious, so I, I talked to, um, Ms. Acton, and she's gonna ask around and find out what exactly that is. But I think that there's another path we could take, too, we could ask Logan how they handle it, since they do six or seven companies.
And that needs to be, that needs to be part of what we do going forward, realistically, we have to have a strategy, uh, for, for how we do this. And, and the reason we have to have a strategy is that this is something that the, that the, um, monitor is very hyped on, because we have the lowest rate in the entire state of payments that we pay out to the, uh, to our, uh, for our public work services, so whatever we do is gonna have to be comparable to that, because ultimately, the state has really got their eye on this.
The, the last item, um, the, the contract deals with the way we're being billed?
Yes.
I haven't had a chance to look at it, so.
It's, it's, it's essentially the same, but what, what, what I've worked out with Mr. Telsey is, I said, for the first month of January into the second month of February, you're going to specifically have them send me specific documents so that we can chart and see exactly where we are, and if there's any discrepancies, we're gonna have to deal with them right away. So, I built in a system with him as far as sending that stuff over.
Well, Mr. Sestelli is not gonna release our funds until he sees a signed contract.
Oh, yeah, so I, that's what's attached, is the contract for, for signature.
So, everybody's email for everyone to review, right, Mr. Tarver, you sent it over today? Okay.
Comes back when they get.
All right. Any more questions regarding number two before we move to number three? Okay.
Number three is kind of a piggyback of that mayor and council, uh, number three, uh, everyone, uh, I think was an agreement that, that we are in good shape with the tax, uh, collector, that, uh, the work of the tax collector has been good, so what the authorization is, is basically just another addendum of extension. And it's the same type situation, where if you, for any reason are not pleased or wanna move in a different direction, uh, there's an out in June for us to move forward and to say we want out, uh, and, uh, we can move forward in another direction. But what I understand each of you to say is that you've been pleased with regard to tax collection, I know the monitor's pleased as well.
All right, number four, properties kept, given to Max Span, um, this is a Sean update.
May I just first put part of this in, so I can address my portion of this, Sean?
Uh, sure.
Sure, um, uh, uh, I have a contract that we drafted specifically, they gave us over a contract, we don't like their contract, we had another contract for them. So, we're using the process of getting that signed, uh, that has not been signed yet, but that's, that's been redone, uh, in, in our favor. Uh, I don't, I don't like the Max Span contracts that they send over, I just wanna get that portion over for me, and I'll turn it back over to Sean.
Do we have to vet on that again?
No, no, because you've already authorized entry into the contract with Max.
Go ahead, Sean.
Um, so, the, uh, Mr. Mr., uh, Mr. Span's team is going over the, um, the properties, and I think, I actually think he went for us to get a, a signed contract, uh, but he said, based off the timeline right now, he expects to have a successful auction in March.
I got a question. Um, when we first start talking about selling these properties, there was certain things we wanted. Um, do we still have it? Where it's supposed to go to, um, homeowners and not just anybody?
Yes, so what's gonna happen is, we're gonna get a list, we're gonna get, um, Max Span's company has analyzed the entire, all the properties that we, that, that we as a bro gave them, which is, you know, really all of them. Some of those properties, we said, don't auction, so obviously, one state tree is on the list, cuz if we own it, but we're not gonna auction at all, cuz this is where we work. The, the, the homes that are on there, um, there's a, there is a, there, there, there are rules that we can attach to each of them, basically saying, don't even bother putting in a bid unless X, Y, and Z. Now, I'm not sure if, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's wise to say only put an auction, only put a bid in for this house if you intend to live there, but. But instead, what normally happens is, there's a deed restriction saying that you have to have a homeowner in by a certain amount of time, whether that be, um, so, so for a lot of those properties, um, it's a, the recommendation was a five thousand dollar minimum with a, a, a one, one year to occupy.
Yeah, but the, one of the purposes of this thing was that we didn't get landlords again, because we have an abundance, um, in, uh, Gloucester County, is it? Um, I forget which town it is now, that's what they did, they put homeowners in, so.
Five-year, five-year residency, you're right, Carol.
Yeah, I don't care if it's, um, somebody buy it and put somebody in there, I just don't want the landlord to buy and put more rentals in there.
So, the five, the five-year that you're talking about is, is five years, but that's, that's attached to a five-year tax abatement as well. And I haven't heard any, I, in this whole process, I haven't heard anybody say anything about tax abatements for homeowners.
No.
Now, that's something that council is open to.
No.
Can you, can you, can you guys discuss this in, in a committee setting? Uh, cuz we can go on and on, I mean, this, we shouldn't be doing this right here.
And, and about Mr. Mr. Giordano's not on here, but we did go through, I did go through a lot of these details at the last housing and zoning committee meeting.
He says he didn't have a list yet. That's what he told me.
I.
Yeah, but right now, we're talking about policy-related issues, um, I can say, I'll send a list to everybody right now.
I thought the purpose of this meeting was so that we could talk about these things, and I understand, Mary, you wanna do it in an hour, but I don't want us to sell these properties and we stuck with landlords again.
Right, what I'm, what I'm saying is, that the, you guys have to work, hash all this out in your committees, and then, when you, when we have a council meeting, you just give an update for what council has decided, that's the way this is supposed to work. So, you're supposed to hash all this out in your committee meetings, and then.
Well, I'm not on that committee, and.
Right, hold on, let me finish, once you finish, once the committee finishes hashing that out, then they share that information with the BA and you as council president, that way, everybody understands what's going on. And then when we have the council meeting, we just kinda, you know, vote on things or whatever, but all the details.
Well, I mean, if, if you, if you'd like, I would kinda just, kinda just amplify that. It, it, it's a little bit different than that mayor, uh, what, what should happen is that there should be the discussion of the actual subject matter between the BA and the committee members. Those committee members then have an obligation to take that information back to their individual council members. Um, it should be done prior to a work session, but if it is, if there's a, a, a discrepancy, then it can be done at the work session, and this would be the time for people to ask certain questions, but most of those questions should be answered in the committee setting. So, you know, questioning is, is, is viable here, and it's allowable here, and it's important here. But you don't wanna start, you don't wanna use this meeting to supplant the committee, uh, structure. This should enhance the committee structure, uh, not replace it. Hopefully, that's helpful to.
A question real quick, are we allowing the public in?
Yes, this is a public meeting.
Okay.
This is a public.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, somebody had popped in, then they popped out, so, okay.
Just one comment, the tax abatement and the residency requirement are two separate things, they're not tied together. Tax abatement is for improvements, whereas the resident require me is requiring a deed restriction.
Yes.
Okay, go on to five.
All right, any, any other, um, questions or comments regarding number four? Sean, you said you're gonna send the list out to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Carol, that's what you were asking for, right? Initially?
Not the list, I was just asking to make sure that we wasn't selling these to landlords again, we had to put something in there, so it's homeowners.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I'm worried about.
Okay. All right, moving to number five, balance in the American Rescue Funds. And, uh, Sean, do you have an update for that, cuz I know Steve's not on?
Um. I, I, I guess, I, I guess, to make it simple, I could just say all the money that was spent from the American Recovery Council is already aware of. So, you know, you got the, um, everyone had this, has this spreadsheet, we, we did have to do, we did one transfer since that has occurred. So, we spent, um, the money that, where the roof is coming from American Recovery Funds. Um, we did some salary, we did salary, uh, we did salary adjustments and, um, and, and with, with the grant re-verse, it was premium paid for people who worked during COVID from those funds as well. Um, there are some other things, and, and some of this has to do with the time that we have in this office, but there are other things that, uh, oh, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollar grant for, uh, violence reduction is, is, is another one. So, um, all of these things are, I, 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 I think everybody is aware of, and some, there's.
In the interest of time, can we just get a report sent to us about the starting balance and then all the funds coming out of it?
Sure.
And the same, I guess, with the next one?
Yeah.
Okay, so Sean, you'll send that out, number six, balance of additional state aid, you can send that out as well to Sean. You get that from Steve, and send that out? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, yes, I'm, I'm just taking notes, I, I can't write and talk at the same time.
Okay, okay, we're on number six. So, uh, Sean, you can send a report out. To council. Okay, number seven. Cost of program, Carney's Point is using in housing and functionality, I'm not, I'm not sure what this item is.
That, I, that was something I asked Ron, but he's not on, I don't think.
Okay, I wanna, I wanna talk about this, because I, and I talked about this at length, at the last council meeting, and, and I'm, and I'm almost surprised that this is an issue that, that's come up again. Um, in fact, I talked about it last council meeting, then one of the council members said, um, Sean, you've been telling us this. But I'll say it again, first, our software in the borough is outdated. Um, we have compensated for that outdated technology with using Microsoft Access for Code Enforcement, and then Casey, and then, uh, Housing, Housing and Zoning Officer uses something called, um, Enforcer, which is very slow on a slow computer. So, we're in a step-by-step process. Um, right now, the engineer is working on the generator, because we need a backup for that. We also need a backup server for our informa, for our information as well, that's, that's one part of the plan. Another part of the plan is, I've already sat through several presentations, um, on municipal management software. This says, is used for housing and functionality, housing is just one aspect. We want, we want to be able to look at any property at any given time and be able to understand the COs that were issued, the zoning, the zoning of that property, uh, code enforcement issues with that property, and, and, and any complaints or, or from the police department. And, and, and any complaints or, or from the police department or from residents about that property as well. So that we can manage what we own and have an understanding what happens throughout the, the borough. Right now, we're doing stuff, um, you know, we're doing stuff with sticky notes and emails. And we need a more sophisticated system that's even more, that's, that's more robust than even what. A, a self-generated database would create. Um, so with that said, as you know, we, we had, um, some, we had a lot of internal issues in the last month. Um, with, with Steve, with, I shouldn't say issues, but with Steve out, that slowed down a few things. What, what we, what I have, what I'm working on right now is identifying where we can. Where, what budget transfers we can do, which you'll see on the twenty-first meeting, what trans, because, because council has to approve budget transfers. What money can be transferred so that we have a pot of twenty thousand dollars for, um. For, for the, for the soft, for the software updates, but it remember that also has to be associated with hardware updates. Because a few people here are working on computers that date back fifteen years and that can't handle new software because. Um, of the, of the processor and all that. So, um. There's a step-by-step process here. We're going to, we have to identify the money. Uh, select a vendor, get it, get the computers, install everything and then it can be used. If we are real efficient, we're real good at this, I think that we can be up and running with, with these things by the first of February.
How much is the software you think, um, that you've been coming across?
So it's, 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 um, the, the, uh, a one, a one-year license is, I think, eighteen hundred per person, but it's buy four, get five. It, get the fifth free. So it's the five licenses, which would be a recurring cost every year of eighteen hundred per person. Which is a, i- i- if you compare it to other, the company that I'm looking at, if you compare this to other companies that do similar things, either they're inadequate. Or they're way more expensive. So I think that the company that we're looking at finds a balance between giving us the functionality that we want and also being affordable. Because in the first year that we get it, it's the license fee plus training, which is an additional cost, which is how I got to the twenty thousand dollar number.
Mr. Tarver, do we have to bid that out?
Oh, I'm not muted. Sorry, I thought. For the licensing, yes. It's going to be over that. I assume you're talking about an amount that's over the threshold, correct?
Yes, and we're, you know, of course, you know, of course. Of course, I'm aware of these.
Then we'll see the specs and everything on that. That's fine.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, who's, who's we? Because.
Committee, council, everybody.
What committee? When?
Oh, God.
Is that not a good question, Madam President, Council President? Because.
I know, I'm not talking about you. I'm trying to cook and, um. Mr. Tarver, yes, I'm cooking again. Um. Sorry.
All right. So that, the specs, all that'll be shared with council once you have it together, Sean. Um, number eight, temporary zoning officer. Sean, do you have an update?
I do. So does that, this, this, um, we, 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 we shared this on Facebook. Um, I personally made about ten calls for face-to-face conversations, asking for recommendations from people. Um, in reality, the applications are really not coming in, um, at the level that I wish they were. Either people are completely unqualified. Or, or whatever. Now.
We've advertised for this, right? The way we usually advertise for positions?
Yes. And, and it's, and it's, you know, and it's been, and it's been, it's been advertised for, for a while. The zoning officer, the housing and zoning officer position, which is two separate roles, is. It's, it's complicated. I, I haven't, I actually, I'm, I'm interviewing somebody tomorrow, um, who I think maybe.
My smoke detector is going off, fooling around with y'all. Uh, I talked to Kay. And.
Go on your interview with somebody tomorrow, you said?
Yes, but Ms. Minty is talking, but her phone broke up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let me keep still. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I was trying to call Casey back because Casey said he. Sharon, you got to leave with this. I guess if we could send him the zoning permits through email, he would work. He would continue to do that until we found somebody.
No, but, but this. Other person that supervises, the zoning officer and, and, um. You know, never mind.
Sean. We, we can't have a break because in ten days, any applicant that applies, ten business days, any applicant applies. That applies is permanent or is automatically approved.
Are you, are you saying, are you, you're, you, you, that sounds a lot like what I said at the, that sounds a lot like what I said at the last council meeting. At the last council meeting, I made it really clear that I recommended somebody. I recommended somebody and, 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 and said, and talked to this, this young, this young lady. We had a rate. Excuse me?
That was for housing. This is zoning. Zoning is.
But it's the same position. It's the housing and zoning o- officer. That's what we, that's the way it's been set in Penn Grove.
Okay, we need to start contacting other municipalities.
I just want to finish my, I, I just want to finish my point, point though. And I did contact municipalities. I'll get to that in a moment.
Okay.
I interviewed a person. I thought, I found her to be qualified with the things that she wasn't good at. She was willing to get trained, where identified to train. And, um, several members of the council said they didn't like the rate they wanted to, the rate that I recommended for that position. What I then said was, okay, if you, if we can find somebody who can be just as good and qualified to make less. Then I'm happy to make that recommendation. We have not, we have not found that person yet. I also reached out to Carney's point, Mayor, Mayor, um, Mayor Ken Brown. Mayor Thomas and I were on an email about this. He said that he's, he has his own issues filling positions and that he can't do it. And if he can, it wouldn't be anywhere close to the beginning of January. Salem said they, shared services won't work for them. They're, they're looking for their own people. Excuse me. And, um, Pen, Pennsville, uh, business administrator is part-time. He may have actually called me back today because I have some missed calls on my phone. I haven't checked yet, but, um, I'm, I'm, I asked Pennsville as well. Um, if you have another town, I mean, this, this is something that should be geographically somewhat close because. Over in my map though, my office changed. Um, so, you know, really, really old, old men's and. Maybe Woods Town, Woods Town's kind of far out, maybe only two places left that are approximately. I am, like I said, I am interviewing somebody tomorrow who does this in another location and I think, and I think we should all cross our fingers that this, that this works out.
But how many, it's a temporary position. How many hours?
So, um, we can, this person could really work up to twenty-five hours. Divide, there's not necessarily viable work that make, that makes that, that many hours necessary. So what I suspect is. In the first two months, this person will work the full twenty-five hours because that would include training. And then they would actually decrease hours as time went on, uh, because of the amount of applications that we get for, for us either COs or zoning.
Can you, I don't know if you can tell me this. What were we paying? Is this, were we paying anybody else to do the, well, besides Casey? Well, I guess you, nevermind. Because I was going to say, what were we paying them, but.
I can, I can answer that. Remember that, that earlier this year, council raised, council raised, basically the floor right now is fourteen dollars an hour. And, and, and Penn Grove, so that's, that was the rate. But even though. And this, this is why hiring is so complicated right now throughout the nation and in Penn Grove. Um, what, uh, what, what the previous person was willing to get paid and what the next person get paid may not match in this market.
I, I, I understand. I just didn't know.
So the challenges that we're currently having now is bringing someone in at market rate. But we have employees who are not even making market rate. So that's, that's, that's the issue that we're having right now. So we.
Creates it, right. So it creates a tension. So at some, at some point, we're not going to be able to check every box on this. We can pay somebody, you know, we can't pay somebody premium, keep all the employees here happy and satisfied and feel respected. And find a super qualified person, um, that can work the hours with, and have a person who's fully trained like that. I don't believe that person exists right now.
Okay, now back to what I said earlier. Due to the fact you just said all those things and. Whether we believe it or not, January first is still coming. Casey said he would work until we found somebody. I'm just giving you an option so we can have somebody. In, so we don't get in trouble for not having anybody. Okay?
So Kay, willing to continue working via email?
Yes. So I tried to call him again to make sure I was saying it right, but he said if somebody could send me an email. So I'm just giving you that option because I know the time is tight and I know we don't have anybody. And if I'm, if memory serves me right, Mr. Sestelli was the one said fifteen dollars, eighteen dollars an hour would not suit. So, I don't know who the council people that was said it, but I remember Mr. Sestelli said it. And he did say what we could do is offer them the fifteen dollars an hour and. And, and tell them in a few months, we would do a review or whatever you want to call it. And if we felt like they were worth it, then we could up them. But that's what he has said in the email.
Right. And, and that, and that, and that, and that, and I, you know, you know, Ms. Minty, and I hope that really works out. But so far, like that applicant, that applicant hasn't, hasn't presented him or herself.
Okay. Well, I, I don't know about that applicant, but still the option is there to, to get a increase. A few months, three dollars an hour. A lot of people don't get that in a couple of months.
Right.
So.
So Sean, can you, can you work with Casey to, because we may have to, we may have to take Casey up on that offer? So can.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely Plan C, but yes.
What that process is, you work with him on that, right?
Yes, that's definitely Plan C. Um, um. I, I would, I, I, I know, I know I'm going to sound like a broken record, but I just think it's important that. Since I'm the direct supervisor of these positions and I'm, you know, kept in the loop and informed of these types of things.
He had just told me that because I asked him, did he know of anybody we could recommend from the towns he works with that we could get part-time? So that's how the conversation came because he works in a few different towns and I know we're short on time. So, and I didn't say nothing because I wanted to call him back. I tried to call him twice today to make sure I was saying it right. And I still haven't, my phone just rang in the house. That might have been him, but I wanted to make sure. But since we were talking about it, I figured I'd throw it out there. So at least we would know we have an option of something.
Okay. Thank you. All right, moving to number nine, certified purchasing agent. Sean, this is a discussion that you, that you're having or you're going to have with the governance committee or have you started discussing that already?
Well, I, Ma- Madam Mayor, I don't know who put this on the agenda and what context it is. I, I mean, I've talked about this position in the past. It is up to council at this point to make the decision and, you know, with all due respect, the, the governance committee hasn't met since August.
I, I just want to say this. I don't know anything about that either, but I talked to a, a lady the other day that's a purchasing agent in Atlantic City. Um, she tells me she does all of the buildings. So she would do the fire department, police department, ambulance department.
Yeah.
Thing that's under the broil.
You talked to Trish Mooney?
No, I don't think that was her name.
Because she's the purchasing agent for Atlantic City.
It might have been, but I can't tell you because it's one of my clients.
Oh, excuse me.
I don't remember that name though, but, um, she did tell me she, she was, and she does all that. And I said, oh, and I would, I know we talked about it, but I didn't know if we was just doing our building or whether we were having it for everybody. That one person doing it for everybody.
There's an advantage, a definite advantage to having a qualified purchasing agent because it allows you to, uh, move forward with a lot of the, uh, different financial proj- projects. Uh, under the guise of a purchasing agent. So, I mean, that's something that we definitely should discuss probably more in depth. But it's definitely something look, for us to look into, a part-time or contract purchasing agent. Um, so we should, yeah, let's, let's make sure we talk about that. And if you'd like me to appear for your committee, it's, you know, when you guys. I, I would be happy to do.
This was something that Ed Sestelli brought up when he did his class for the, um, elected officials. And he recommended it.
Yeah, it makes sense.
But then I brought this up and I asked, I asked for feedback on what direction to go in in terms of either hiring a person or part-time. And, um, you know, Mr. Tarver just said this would be good to, you know, for council to discuss. I agree. I would just like for that conversation to have a home and a timeline attached to it so that we can figure this out. Because purchasing. But it, it, it's, it's a, it, it takes, it takes a lot of time for, for, uh, both me and Erica mostly. Purchasing takes more time than I would like for it to, and I would love to have help. And, um, you know, having a, 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 a qualified purchasing agent serves us. Six, save, it saves us money and it simplifies the purchasing process. Um, great, we spent, we, we, once this, the position pays for itself because. With all due respect to Mr. Tarver, he would be less involved in the bid process and reviewing contracts and all because the QPA would fill that role in, instead. At a, at a, at a, at a, uh, decreased hourly rate.
Maybe. Depends on your QPA. I'm kidding, just kidding. JK, hello.
There better be like Tim Diner or something.
All right, so we're done with number nine.
Yes.
No, no, well, well, Ma- Ma- Mayor, I'm, excuse me, I didn't even say no like that. What are we going to do next? Like, what's the, what's the next step?
Let me suggest, may I suggest something? Um, we, we already know that this, this is one of the things that we should just have things designated. And say these things are going to be held in, in whatever committee they're going to do. And at the end of this list. What might make sense is for us to designate right now, pull out a calendar since we're all here and see when those next meetings are going to be held. So, look, we just know that this one is going to be designated for, for committee and we can move on to the next.
We're at the end of the year and we have to pay.
You're breaking up.
Oh.
I got the gist of what she's saying though. She's basically saying we're at the end of the year. And so we, we have to do new committees. Uh, that, that's, that's a good observation. I hadn't, hadn't really thought about that. Um. My, my suspicion is, I'm sorry, Sean, I didn't mean to step over you.
No, I was going to say the charge of the committee, and by charge, I mean, that's, that's like parliamentary procedures. The charge to a committee actually doesn't have to change from one calendar year to the next calendar year, even if the members of that committee do change.
That's what I was going to say. It still shouldn't, it won't impede us from doing that, you know, just the committee members may change, but you still have the information flowing. So. Okay.
All right. Um, ten, company to discard records, scan records. Sean, I think, I think you gave an update for this, didn't you?
Detailed, yes, at the last council meeting.
Could you just give us the click notes real quick, just like ten seconds?
Sure.
What, what's, what's the action that needs to take place now?
Ultimately, the action is a vendor has to be, we have to get quotes and we have to select and hire a vendor to. Um, participate in this process. And, and I think the question on that is, I actually, I have no idea how much this is going to cost the borough. I know we, we, we did reserve some money. Around one of the American Recovery Funds. But I don't know if this is something that's going to cost like three thousand dollars or twenty-three thousand dollars. Um, and it's, and, and I don't know, I don't know if anybody has a, a estimate or knows from other, other places. I know it has, it's going to have to deal with how many boxes and stuff we have. And how much of that stuff is moldy and has to be discarded versus scanned. Um, this is, I, I gotta say, like, this, this is an important topic. Sharon, um, our, Miss Karen Williams. Um, she deserves, it needs more space, uh, or, or, there on the first floor, um, and all that, so. But we got, anyway, we got to get, we got to get, we got to get quotes and all that. I have several companies that did this that I've, that I met at the leading municipalities. And, um, as those meetings occur or whatever, I can get, give everyone up to date on the cost and the process.
So can we do as much as we have money for, at least start?
I don't, I don't, maybe, I don't know. I mean, because normally, I mean, that's, that's, that's interesting. You know, normally they, a, a company, they're going to see the entire situation, give a quote, give a quote for fixing the entire thing. Now, can we pay for it? Like, can we do one half, one year, you know, and another half, another year? Maybe. That's just, that's just going to be a part of the conversations that we have once we, once we have.
So where are you right now in, in regard, in regards to, um, getting quotes? Have you sent out anything?
We got, I got, I, I. Look, it's just, it's just, as you know, it's just me in this office and I'm looking at my desk because I'm, I'm reminding myself. Well, my desk, I got, I got, I got Max fan issues, cannabis.
Maybe I can be helpful. Maybe I can be helpful to that because I have dealt with these companies in a couple of different municipalities. If you'd like, I try to see if I can get ahold of, uh, if you can give me an estimate of what we're talking about in terms of the volume of material. I can probably get at least a ballpark figure so that we're not operating. I can probably get at least a ballpark figure so that we're not operating blind.
Now, but when you say estimate, like, you count that, can I, do we count that by boxes?
Yeah, volume, yeah, generally that's, since everything is stored in boxes. If you give us a, a general volume of, of the boxes, and it doesn't have to be exact. You know, but a general volume of the boxes, you know, multiply the height by the uh, square footage and kind of just give us a, a rundown. I will, uh, I'm gonna put that down on my list right now.
We should probably try and get rid of all the moldy stuff.
Yeah, and keep in, keep in mind, a lot of that stuff is not going to fall within the parameters of the record retention. Um, a while back, I gave Sharon a copy of the record retention schedule. She has it, and if you don't have it here, everyone, Sharon, I can share it with everyone else. Give it, they gave it to her because she is the technical custodian of records. So, um, just wanna make sure that we know it is, but realistically, you know, for the most part, anything falling outside of a seven-year statute unless it's specific financial contracts that have a continued uh, 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 relevance, that, that's gonna go, it's gonna go.
I was thinking if we, if we can get rid of the moldy stuff, because nobody wants to deal with that. And then have maybe the um, offices themselves start going through what they have in their own space. And that would probably save us a little bit of money.
Yeah, Councilwoman, if, if it's unreadable, then it doesn't matter when it is.
What it is.
It could be. If it's unreadable, we can't keep it. So, I mean, unreadable, we, we can't keep it. So I'll help you out on that, uh, uh, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Um, Rob and. Okay, number eleven, the closet still on hold, new place for storage.
That's the same as this.
That's, that's, okay, so that's, that's.
I think we've decided that it's time to come out of the closet.
Period.
Don't make jokes like that.
All I'm talking about is, is an establishment. I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay, moving to number twelve, New Jersey American Water.
Okay, what I did is, I, I didn't know this was on the agenda, but so just now I sent over a letter that I forwarded to New Jersey American Water. It's in your email right now, uh, back in August of this year, uh, inquiring about um, property acquisition. When I say property acquisition, what we were concerned about was whether or not uh, New Jersey American Water, which has been going around buying up not just uh, uh, acquisition to certain aquifers and, and uh, and uh, reservoirs. But is also looking to buy the mechanisms of delivery and to maintain those mechanisms of delivery. You know, piping, pumps, things of that nature, uh, under an agreement in which they would sell that and they would maintain it. Uh, there are certain clear advantages to that, there are some disadvantages to that. Uh, I did send a letter over to, I, I can't remember the gentleman's name because I don't have it in front of me right now. Um, uh, I think it was Mr. Lynch. Um, what I had found out is that Mr. Lynch apparently either had a, uh, had a medical issue. Uh, and so that was.
Oh, you're talking about the President of American Water?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, you know?
I do, yes.
Okay, yeah, he had some sort of medical.
Candy-based business, you know, we all know each other.
Yeah, he, he, uh, he had a medical issue and, and his uh, uh, second is, uh, is handling this, so I, I did reach out for her with a phone call. But, uh, I think it's something worth looking into. Councilwoman Scarface, she brought it up and she's been asking me about that. Uh, because it could provide a financial benefit to the borough. So we're still on that.
Um, real quick, Sean, Sean had a conversation recently, right? And they, and they claim they already own our mechanisms, correct, Sean?
They do, yeah.
Which I do not believe that's.
Oh, really?
David Mayer, who's also my former boss from many years ago, is the Vice President of American Water for Government Affairs.
Okay.
He's also the mayor of Gloucester Township. David Mayer and I talked about this last week. He asked me a couple of questions. And then he said, well, when people pay their water bill, who do they pay it to? You know, so I put my phone down for a second and said, Erica Steve, who do you pay your water bill to? Well, they live in Park, well, Steve was at Park's point, but if you live in Pennsboro and pay your water bill to American Water.
Right.
Because they, because it's their system. So, um, the mayor had, when I, the mayor and I briefly talked about this and she had some very specific questions. So what I'm gonna do is put very, like, I'm gonna ask some basic questions in an email to, to David um, at American Water. I'll share that with everyone. Um, in terms of ownership, is there any money we can squeeze out these folks or whatever? And I'll, and I can, uh, I can, I can, I can share that as soon as I get a response from him. That actually should be a pretty quick thing because just a couple of questions and answers.
There's a difference, huge difference between supplying the water and owning the uh, mechanisms, the property.
Just for this, just for the sake of time, I don't know if you want me in a level of detail, but he looked into it, so I, I talked to David. He said, let me, he asked me some questions. I don't know who we talked to, wherever he talked to, I'm sure they knew what they were talking about, and then he came back and said, yeah, we already, we already had.
Okay.
He has an American Water already owned. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna get that in writing because that was a phone conversation again and I'll share.
Thank you, Sean. Okay, number thirteen, sell property to Sewerage Authority.
I got a phone call from Mr. Hill a while back. He sent over uh, a proposal that came from the Sewerage Authority. You will remember that there was a point at which the um, the uh, the young lady, Ms., I can't remember her name, came over and gave a presentation to the council. Uh, um, regarding some of the things that, that they were doing at the Sewerage Authority. I, I didn't at the time understand it as a specific proposal, unfortunately. Uh, I understood it as a, as a concept. Uh, but realistically, they were making a specific proposal for a specific uh, parcel of land in which they apparently want to uh, uh, put on uh, uh, solar in order to generate energy. I talked to Mr. Hill and uh, this was just a week and a half ago. And I asked him to, in addition to having sent over what he sent over, uh, send over a blurb and advise me what the benefit is to the municipality. And, you know, in his understanding, uh, you know, just the same as if he was gonna do a prospectus to sell something to someone else. I understand that we are, you know, basically one mechanism, one municipal entity, another municipal entity. But still, uh, you know, there needs to be a benefit because every, every property has the potential of being a benefit for one group to another, so we, we wanna make sure that there's a benefit. Once I get the information from you, I will present it to you as a council for, uh, I'm sorry, I'll present it to the business administrator so that he can present it to you uh, as a uh, as a uh, committee and then it can go to the council.
Thank you, Rob.
You're welcome.
Okay, number fourteen, sell property to Habitat. Sean, there. Aren't, we're creating a process for that. You have an update?
Um, I'm gonna answer the question like this. As, as, as you guys know, I asked Mr. Hill, our redevelopment attorney, I asked him some very specific questions about development, housing development. What is the role of the administration? What is the role of council? What is the, what are, what are the tools that we can use in order to do these things? And that includes, when do we sell a property to a person for a dollar? What does that process look like? Um, I put that memo in everyone's mailbox probably two weeks ago and I'm not sure if I emailed it. Um, I, I can't email it. That, that's the first thing, the first, that's part one. Part two is I don't know.
Before you go to part two, the memo that you put in everybody's mailbox, can you email that to everybody?
Yes.
Can I interrupt you for just a second? A previous council has already passed a resolution to sell that property. And I think I've spoken to Mr. Tarver about that. They have that copy that basically we have to fulfill, I would say. Habitat has a specific resolution that was passed by a previous council to sell that property.
Well, I, I gotta say, this, the, the Habitat community now have an email exchange. I'm not saying, what you're saying is, is likely true, but she has not mentioned that at all.
Sharon, do, are you aware of anything in, in your?
There were some resolutions adopted, but off the top of my head, I am not, yeah, I'd have to look back. Do you know what year that may have been?
I think I have, Sharon, I'll look for it because um, Sue Ann sent it to me in my personal email. So I'm gonna have to like find it in the nine thousand emails that I get every day. But I will send that over to you.
Okay.
And then you can pull the, the um, official one.
Original, yeah.
Okay, um. Quite frankly, I'm just gonna say this and we'll move on. Quite frankly, I like working with Habitat. I like the arrangement that we've already had. They, out of everybody, they, we give them a property, they clear it out, they build it. We get homeowners on a tax roll. I think it's a great relationship and that's just my opinion. Um, and I think mostly everyone agrees with that.
Yeah.
Um.
Let's go, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If, if this, if Habitat for Humanity calls me tomorrow and say, hey, what's up with the borough selling those properties to me? I just want to be clear, like, I don't know what to say because we had, we don't have a conclusion on this and, um, and um, if there's an email that, if there's an email that somebody got that has a resolution on it, I mean, that would be helpful for us to figure this out.
Yeah, I think that's what you'd have to say, basically, is that we're in the process of trying to sort this out. Hopefully, we'll get that email soon and that resolution, we'll know exactly where we stand. So, that, that's, that's, and ultimately, if we can't find it, we'll have to ask her for what she has.
I think I have, I think she sent me a copy of it or she sent me the date. I'm, I'm not sure which. But I'll probably see her, I'll just ask her for it again if I can't find it.
And I'll check my records tomorrow as well. I'll check the.
Okay, thanks, Sharon.
Thank you. All right, number fifteen, Pennsboro Gardens. I don't, what, what? Irene, this is, this is.
Yeah, just the status of what's going on with our agreement with them for the pilot and where they are in.
Well, that's, that's, that's done. The only thing that has to be, and, and, and that's already signed by the mayor. The only thing that has to be done is just, uh, we were just talking the other day about the sidebar. Um, which was the additional portion uh, of uh, money that we discussed as a, a donation from.
They are gonna take care of that ditch.
Yeah, they have to. That's part of the uh, agreement, part, as part of the agreement. What they have to do is they've got to develop the actual um, mechanism for uh, for uh, drainage. Because that's what.
Right, okay.
That's what was for the beginning, so that's contractual. They have to do that as per both uh, the administrative law standards and the borough standards.
Just rechecking that.
Yes, yes, that's what they have to do.
Yes.
And last item on the agenda, engineer report on flooding demo park and supermarket. Irene, what were you looking for, the report from the engineer?
If, if he's gonna give a report, remember he talked about, to that gentleman that was there about the flooding. If we could schedule him to come in or on a work session or something and just give us a status of everything that he's been working on, that would be good.
Okay. Sounds like someone's gonna say something.
Oh, no, I'm talking, talking to myself. I just said that would be good.
Or maybe give us a report, so we're, I don't wanna stay here for a long time.
Okay. Maybe he can, maybe he can just send it to us via email.
Yeah.
All right.
How?
Sean, can you reach out to the engineer for those reports? Thank you.
I have uh, one last thing. Debbie Ashcraft got in touch with me the other day. She is willing to step in and be the emergency management person.
We're not gonna, we can't discuss personnel in an open meeting.
Yeah, we can't, we can't do that right now, but um, we can't discuss individual persons.
She don't work for us.
Yeah, but it's, it's the potential, what? He does receive a stipend also, so anyway, I, I don't wanna go through anyway. But I think what, what you may wanna do is, what I hear you saying is that in terms of the open position, there may be an individual that may be uh, someone that you may wanna consider. Now, do we have a personnel committee? We don't have a personnel committee, do we? That pauses, that falls under our governance, right?
Yes.
That kind of slides us into the next issue, if I may, Mayor. I'm not trying to, to, to push anything. I'm not trying to end the meeting, but we did talk about trying to set up these committee uh, meetings. I understand that we are at uh, the midpoint of December. You know, it's always difficult going into December with the slide past uh, Christmas and into New Year. But can we set something up for next week with the, with the committee meetings? We have all the committee chairs here with the exception of Mr. Giordano, right?
Yep. That's a question for the council members. Can you set up, can we schedule committee meetings? Can you guys, your committee meetings scheduled? Can we do that now?
Let's, let's do it now.
Wait a minute, you want us to have a committee meet or you want us to have a meeting altogether?
No, no, the committee meetings, the committee meetings with Mr. Brown.
So that we can get through, get through the outstanding items. The committees need to meet and schedule some meetings.
So that, so that these things, they don't get lost in the sauce here. We've got all these things, the things that we've been able to talk about here, in order to be able to keep them on the front burner and to get things moving, that's kind of what the committee thing does. It lets us do that as well as any new issues.
Are, are you gonna, are we gonna go through the list and say which committee is gonna take care of what? That's.
Is there any, I was gonna say, I think.
Yeah, some of them are obvious, but I don't know that they all are.
But it's probably best for us to set the date first and then. So what works for governance committee in terms of dates?
Charlotte. What do you think? I can't do Thursday. Let's see anyone.
We're talking about this week or next week?
This week.
Well.
This week or next week, one, I guess, right?
Up to you.
Um.
Am I right, Mr. Brown? Is it before next, or next week?
Next week's a little.
Yeah, let's, let's see how this plays out.
This week is a tough week anyway, I'm think, I'm sure, thinking.
I, I'm pretty, um, except Friday. You said you can't do what?
Thursday, I can't do Thursday.
Tomorrow's Wednesday.
I can meet you tomorrow after school, well, whatever. You're still out, right?
Yeah. So I have, I, I have um, doctor's appointments tomorrow in the morning. But I can do um, anytime from noon.
Do you do four o'clock?
Yeah, I should be able to, yeah.
Because I'll be done work by then.
Okay.
You wanna do it in person or Zoom?
Can we do Zoom?
Money.
Costs money.
Well, then we'll do it in person.
You, you asked me which one, I just gave you my preference, but, no, I know who it was.
Don't care.
I, I mean, it's easier because then if I, whatever I'm doing, I can, but if you can't, then we'll just, you know.
You'll do Zoom?
Well, I told, we'll, we'll let Charlotte do Zoom.
Do you, do you want me to set it up for you guys, a Zoom meeting for you?
Sure.
Okay.
Because I don't know how to do it, I, yeah.
Okay, and that's at four P M, right? Okay, so hold on, let me make myself.
And I'll call Ron.
Okay, governance committee.
Sonya, you're invited. Actually, you're probably invited to everything right now.
Thank you.
Is that okay with you, four?
I know, I don't get off work till five o'clock.
Charlotte, what do you wanna do?
Um, I'm just trying to think. Actually, four does work best, but uh.
All right, Sonya, I'll just call you and let you know what happened.
Oh, and we're on Zoom. I guess while she's at work, she can't put her phone.
If you, if you use that, that neat template that I send everybody to take notes, you can always just send Sonya the notes after you guys are done.
Yeah, I'll, I'll call or whatever. Yeah, thank you guys.
So four o'clock it is.
I think that the um, the governance committee holds like a lot of stuff, and since it hasn't met since August, it's not with the administration. Um, and, and, and we have a new council member coming in, I think actually it's pretty important that, I think it would be really good to have you know, everybody participate in the meeting to close out the year.
Everybody, like who? Just in? Everybody, like who? Just in the committee?
They, the committee members.
Can you send me the, um, so do you have outstanding items that, that governance needs to meet about for the end of this year? Can you send those items to me so that I can add them into the agenda and the meeting invite?
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't, I mean, the, the, the chair sets the agenda.
Well then, can you send it, somebody, I just need to set up the Zoom. And I wanna include the agenda items. So whoever's gonna in charge of the agenda, can you just send me the items, please? So I can put it in the Zoom, that way you guys will stay on track and you won't be there all night.
And that's, and that's four o'clock at what time? At what day? Okay, fourth tomorrow, gotcha.
I'll, I'll send you the things on this list that we're gonna be responsible for. That'll be more than enough to talk about.
And then, who's the other committees we have to do?
Well, I'm sorry, just on that point, Mr. Tarver and Madam Mayor, um, I guess this falls under you. I think we have to, we, I, I'm gonna ask that we take the, if, any issue related to the audit, um, take that off the agenda for governance committee.
Well, we can deal with that later, but we're just setting the times now, right?
Alright, um. Next. Who else needs to meet? Which other committee?
Zoning.
Zoning, housing and zoning.
Yeah, Ron, Mr. Giordano's the chair. That's, I think it's, um, Ms. Martin and.
Oh, I'm just sitting here looking, I gotta look them up.
Whoever's on here should know.
There it is, I got it. It's, um, oh, Miss, uh, Rainbow.
Okay, so it's Ron, Charlene and Rainbow, okay. So, so we have to check with Ron for it, for I guess the time. He's gonna do that. Sean, are you gonna do it? Charlene, you gonna do it? Who's gonna do it?
I'm sorry, am I gonna do, I'm sorry, Mayor, am I gonna?
I just need someone to reach out to Ron. Time is good for him, in terms of, um, the housing committee meeting and zoning.
Um, I could text him right now.
Okay. And then let me know and I'll, I'll set up the Zoom, okay? Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and you'll have to check, you know, we'll have to check with, uh, Rainbow too, to make sure that that time fits into, so you guys. Just let me know. Okay, next committee.
What else, Mr. Brown?
Our buildings and grounds, but buildings and grounds is met. And Ms. Martin is, I'm looking, Ms. Martin is the chair that, um, I think for, at least for this, Mrs. Martin, she may disagree, but I think the rest of this year we're good, because we've had enough meetings and updates.
I, I am, because the only thing would be, what you're gonna provide is with the engineer report on that, so that, that would be, you know, that would suffice for us just to see that, but.
How, how about the energy audit? This would be a good time to put in the air conditioning when they're not busy.
Yeah, there, that's a, that's a, that's another thing, that's a step-by-step process.
It's just an application. I filled it out before. It's pretty easy. They wanna know your energy usage and things like that.
You know? Um, alright, I've talked, I, I've talked to the people who are responsible for the energy audit. And it's a little bit more complicated than that, but it is in motion. There are a few emails going back and forth. And I'll, I'll know more by the, even before, so by the twenty-first, by the next council meeting.
You'll have a, you'll have a, an update by the next council meeting next week? Update.
I, so just, so, what I, what I can say for now is, is this is an update from the last council meeting. Uh, last week, I talked to Sustainable Jersey. Sustainable Jersey kinda acts as a middleman between the borough and the energy audit itself. But it's actually Atlantic, it's, it's, it's Atlantic City Electric that actually is gonna do it. But there's a, there's a, like I said, there's a step-by, there's a step-by-step process, and I'm just gonna, because I, I, I hear people sometimes put things into the sphere and it's like, we, we don't have enough information yet to know what, what's gonna, what's gonna happen. So, I would just ask for patience in the step-by-step process. The energy audit has to be scheduled. That may not happen until January, then you got to get the results. Um, you know, and, 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 and we'll go from there. They already, Sustainable Jersey reviewed our energy bill. We are, we pay a third party called Constellation for, as, as our energy provider. Um, so, but the things that, that they're gonna, there is, and there is a company that, th- this is what we hope, that we, we have to, they had, oh, oh, actually, let me back up a little bit. Our municipal building is too small for, for most municipalities to get an interview, get the same type from the same funding source. Our municipality borough building is too small for that. So that means there's an alternative program that we have to see if we qualify for. That's why this is, that's why this is a little bit, um, this is, that's why it's a little bit, uh, different. But from that, once it happens, if we qualify, they're gonna change our light bulbs, analyze for solar and things like that. So I can send all this to everybody in writing. Um, just allow me to have, um, one more meeting to get all the information and I can update everyone on it.
Thank you. Alright, next committee.
Recreation.
I think recre- I think recreation. I don't know if you guys need to meet about anything at the end of this year.
So, so what Ms., what, what Ms. Mitzi has, um, has said in the past, I've said, probably everybody said, is that we ideally, now that we have some of our culture set, what we would like to, is for, is to see if we can get, um, an understanding at the beginning of the calendar year of all the events the borough is gonna participate in, in fund. All the, and then the other events that maybe the borough can participate in and not fund, which means you have to have another co-part, you know, host or lead. Um, so that we can have an understanding of how that money from that department will be spent. There are some things, there are just some like general things we should have in the borough, like a, like a, like a speaker and other stuff that, that you just use. So, um, I haven't been at a recreation committee meeting in a while, but maybe I should be at the next one so I can, um, talk more from administrative perspective of what we look for and, and what our processes are.
I was only gonna say that, um, I think as far as meeting again this year, recreation's fine. Uh, we decided to meet last week. And I don't, as far as I know, we're not doing anything else other than a toy drive on the eighteenth. Um, I don't mind meeting early next year to, like you said, establish things we wanna do throughout the year. Um, but as far as this year, I don't see a reason why we're gonna be meeting again. Unless something else comes up by the end of this year, but the only other thing we have is the toy drive on the eighteenth. We talked about that last Thursday, I think, or last Tuesday, or Wednesday, it was the last Thursday.
Right. So, uh, okay. Okay, next is, uh, public safety. Does public safety need to meet about anything?
Probably so.
So I, 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 I have, I have asked, I've asked Rich to have a rolling agenda of, of the same three items in every public safety committee meeting. That is, um, that's, um, uh, budgetary, budgetary issues, including overtime, major crime data, and, and personnel issues, Mr. Tarver advised, or personnel issues that be handled a little bit differently. Um, so I would replace personnel, well, including personnel issues hiring. So, do we need to hire police officers? Absolutely. Major crime data. And, um, in, 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 in budgets, since it's the largest department in the borough. And then, I guess, fourth, we could say, um, things, because, because that's police. Also, the issues with the fire department, uh, E M, E M T and public safety in general.
So does that mean, since, um, you just ran my department, I don't have to have a meeting?
No, I mean, I think, I think that, I think that, um.
I think what you're saying is you do have to have a meeting.
We had a meeting with the, uh, we didn't have it with Rich, cause he wasn't here. We had one with Fritz. I was supposed to have one with the, um, blood with that group, but that fell apart. So, yeah. I just don't know me, cause I have Ron and Charlene on my committee.
You might have to talk about retention too.
There, there are a few things that you may wanna talk about in police committee. I would suggest that you do schedule a meeting, particularly coming to the end of the year. And I, I would, would be happy to be part of that meeting too.
Okay, well, I can't give you a date now, cause I have to check with the guys on their schedule. So I'll get back with you tomorrow.
Public works.
What else, uh, really wants to meet about until we sign an agreement? I mean, heck, we can't even get an email or reply back from Carney's point.
Now, if, if, uh, let me just say this about Carney's point. Uh, it's my understanding they no longer have B A, and part of our agreement was that there would be a B A and B A, uh, B A to B A, um, interaction if something was wrong. Am I correct in, in, in my understanding that they don't have a B A?
Yes, you are.
Number thirty-first. As of December thirty-first.
Okay, but, but, I think she's not even there now, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, maybe she's taking time out.
Yeah, probably so. Um, so in this, it's very sensitive period. Let me know if there are things that are not going right, because I'm gonna get in somebody's butt about all this stuff. Uh, we, we need to, we need to get them right from the very beginning, uh, and, and I, I will do that, you know, in a.
Work orders. How about a form for work orders?
We had that.
Yeah. Did you wanna, Sean, do you wanna send me a copy of the form? Well, actually, you could just send it to all the councils, so, so that they can see what that form looks like.
It's just, I mean, it's just a simple form, it's just, just work order, name, the issue, and, and a sign and a fax.
How about change the tiles in the, uh, courtroom now that the roof's fixed?
We have a contract, we have a contractor doing that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's beyond the scope, I believe. Changing tiles?
Yes.
Ceiling tiles.
Ceiling tiles?
There's a drop ceiling.
Okay, so the, you're not talking about installing a new ceiling?
The reason why this was, this was, this, first, this was discussed in millions and grounds committee. Um, second, the reason why a contractor should do it is because the tiles that are being replaced, they have something on top of them.
A what?
And, well, why, they're being replaced because there's something, cause either water or chemicals stained them, that came, that ended up coming through, so there's something.
The roof, right, the roof.
Well, may, well, maybe, cause it's, it, cause it's, it's brown, it's, it's not yellow, it's brown.
By now. But, but the contract with buildings, with the street department says building maintenance, and they're drop ceiling tiles.
So here's what we have to do, just so you know, with, with that, just so that I'm, I'm clear about what our contract requires with that. Uh, if that is what they are doing with their building, then that's what they're gonna be owed to do with us, I believe. Brown, if you'd like, I will move forward and just inquire about that. And the only reason why I would do that is because we're in a real sensitive period with them, and they're gonna wanna please.
Mr. Ram, Mr. Rainbow and I, um, Mr. Rainbow and I talked about this, um, we had a good conversation earlier. And I, I'll share, I'll share with council the same thing I shared with him. Um, which is that Carney's point just did something that I thought was very, I think, across the line. I called Carney's point with a very simple question. I was not in a position to do a work order. Instead of them having decency to say, we don't, that they didn't have their personnel or staffing to do it, they took it upon themselves to get a contractor to come to, come to Pens Grove, do it, and then send us the bill for it for a hundred and fifty dollars.
What was it?
It, it was just turning the power on at Memorial Park.
Um, do they have electricians?
So I thought they did, right, so I called, cause then, you know, they're large enough, I thought they had a, a, an electrician on staff. The lady answering the phone didn't even say, she didn't even say, she didn't explain it to me. She was like, I had to make a call. She's like, she questioned it, losing the contract. I need to talk to the C O, I'm gonna get back to you. I'm like, well, this is time sensitive. I didn't hear anything in ten minutes, and everybody's standing outside wondering when the lights would be on, literally. So, um, um, I, I called the electrician that someone recommended that had just been in Pens Grove for a different issue. And while I'm on the phone with them, they said, oh, somebody from Carney's point is calling us to do the very same thing. I'm like, well, why would Carney's point, why would, where's Carney's point's electrician? And if they didn't have one on staff, why wouldn't this lady tell me this? And then, on top of that, then we get a bill. As the business administrator, I should, I, I, I'm not supposed to go around paying bills for con, for vendors that we didn't, that we never had a purchase order for. That's not, that's not our process. Now, nor, now I gotta say, normally, previously, when the business administrator was in Carney's point, me and, me and Ms. English had a great relationship. I could email her, call her, um, or work order anytime, and it, and it got done, we communicated in response. But since, but since she's been gone, which has probably been like three weeks from now, um, their relationship is, is fractured.
Have this see your list for the trash.
I answered your email back. That picture that they sent you is a picture down at the riverfront. That's not at the park. So I don't know what they did. But I'm sure the electric don't run that far.
Hold on, let me see, cause I'm, I'm not sure, I'm, I'm, I'm behind on emails. Let me just catch up and see what you mean.
If I can add to this. So the gentleman that kinda knows where all the PowerPoints are in Pens Grove, uh, that used to work for Carney's point, he has since retired. His name is Bob Hempel. Um, he knows, he pulled up while we were out there doing the lights and knew where every box was.
Right.
And he was the one that used to take care of it. Um, and apparently, no one else on Carney's point knows that, what he did.
But, but we had a, um, electrician that Stephen then would get when we had problems there to come out and do that. We didn't go to Carney's point, we had a different electrician, some guy in Pensville.
I mean, just as little as turning on the power. Yeah, it was just a, a matter of opening the door and turning it on.
But, um.
So.
Electrician, um, we usually went Steve, but Sean needs to look at that email, because the email he sent us.
No, 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 I, I got you. I'm, I'm gonna answer your question. Then, well, Mr. Rainbow's point first. I agree with you, Mr. Rainbow. I'm not here to like waste any, waste his brother's money. So when I called Carney's point, I was hoping is, the person would say, oh, let me, let me see. They would ask somebody and say, oh, Mr. Brown, all you have to do is go across the street, climb up the pole, open up the box and, and, and flip the switch. Cause that's exactly what we did. Um, instead, they sent an electrician that we then got a bill for. Uh, Ms. Ms. Mitzi, what happened was, once that electrician came and I saw that what he did took three minutes, I'm like, oh, while you're here, um, while, while you're here, there's another issue that we have down the street, so you might as well look at that too, which, which they did, and that's why you see that in the.
Okay. And ask Bob if he wants a job.
I don't know, it'd take away from him riding around at fifteen miles an hour with his dog on his lap.
Meetings are recorded.
Um, I have one more thing, Mayor. Um, one of the things that, um, and Mr. Tarver, you can tell me if this is for the right meeting. We need to discuss some of the, um, permits and things and the fees. This may not be the meeting for, may have to do it another time, but we can't keep our fees where they're at.
No, it is. And, and, and this is time sensitive, cause there's a bunch of stuff that's about to happen. Ms. Ms. Mitzi, you mind if I, can I pick up on that point, you mind?
Go ahead.
So, we're gonna, we're gonna start accepting applications for, um, for cannabis. And we, those fees need to be high, cause we need to make sure people that are applying to get a letter of support from the governing body are serious contenders. Um, so, at this, at, 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 at this point, between Casey, Nate, Tyrone and I, we have recommendations of fees that should be increased. It's for like C O's, food trucks, things like that. This is a series of ordinances, cause I think there are each individual ordinances, it's not just like one ordinance. Um, so it's probably, we're looking at maybe somewhere between five and ten that have to be changed and updated. So my suggestion is that we get that list, to, discussing in committee. You guys can figure out which committee you wanted to discuss then. And then by, um, hope, you know, and I would say, just because I know one or two of these are time sensitive. Um, you know, we're, we're, we have people paying us ten dollars and pay twenty-five dollars everywhere else, right? Um, we have people paying us nothing where they pay something other places.
And we had people at that three-on-three playing a hundred dollars for a table and we got nothing.
Yes.
And the festival. Well, you, we didn't make any money on that either.
So, yeah. So we gotta change some things and, and they are time sensitive. Some of these things need to be in as soon as we can get them in, so we start to hear off right.
Now, I wanna, like, like, let me, let me, I'm, I'm, I'm just going back to like graduate school for a second. The administration at any time, we can recommend things, and the way that happens is I talk to the staff, we have leadership team meetings with the mayor, Rob. And then we discuss these things, you know, then we have a draft, it gets on the agenda. Uh, Ms. Scarpese has said many months ago that she wants what Congress refers to as regular order, which means things are discussed in committee before it gets to the full council. I love that idea. I think it's really good, but of course, that means council committees actually have to meet in order to discuss it at those points in time. Um. Anyway, that's, how, anyway, so we as administration, we can do that, but council can also do it where you can just make a resolution right on, right on the floor of a meeting, uh, for certain things. It's a little bit more murky because the language has to be drafted, but at least putting it on the agenda or on the table. Um, because sometimes I'm left wondering why don't, I feel like I've said this a few times, um, the mayor, the mayor has said it and, and, and is, is on the same page. And then I'm like perplexed on what to do next.
What, what is your point with that? I'm trying, not quite clear on what your point is.
That we, that there should always be an, an origin and home for these items that were suggested, such as changing fees.
Yeah.
Two things that Mr. Sesteli said is that every ordinance should have two, two elected officials to sponsor it. And it should come out of the, the committees, and that's not what we've been doing. The other thing that, um, we have in our policy manual is that the agenda should be at the Monday, a week before the meeting, which we haven't followed at all. Now, the bills have been getting better. I've noticed that the odd bills are coming in first and then the reoccurring bills maybe later, like electric and things like that. So, that's been improving. We have that for, I think, the Wednesday or Thursday before the council meeting. So I know that that's improved, but the agenda is still.
And I, and I think, I think what I help with that, um, I mean, is once the, the committees get their structured meetings and you guys start meeting and you discuss, you know, what needs to be on the agenda at the next meeting and the resolutions and ordinance come out of your committees, then, and then you get them, you know, you get them to Rob, discuss them with the big BA, get them to Sharon, she puts it on the agenda. If we get that whole system going, I think that we would be a lot better instead of every, you know, before every meeting, we're all scrambling, trying to figure out what's happening. You know.
But that's.
Why I'm taking notes, to send to everybody, so we know what we talked about at each meeting. And if there's any follow-through, any action items, anything that anybody needs to do, we know, and then we can go back through and say, hey, you know, um, councilman such and such, you had this item, or mayor, you had this item, what's the status? And I give you a status, we give each other status. That's how I think.
Well, I, I think he discussed that before you came into that meeting, that they should have actual sponsors, like a committee sponsor, but at least two elected officials to sponsor an ordinance especially. That way you know you have a first and a second.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, um, I don't espouse the two sponsors. There has to at least be one sponsor, and that's something that we're gonna try to deal with, uh.
Right, well, he was saying like a first and a second motion, so it can move forward, so.
Well, as long as there is, as long as there's one sponsor, it can move forward, and that's another thing that we, we need to discuss amongst ourselves as council members because we do need to go to. Uh, it's actually statutory, uh, for a lot of the matters dealing with sponsors because sponsors for resolutions have certain abilities, uh, and certain responsibilities, so that's, is something that we are going to, to move.
Um, did you say resolutions or resolutions or ordinance?
Resolutions and ordinances, you know.
Really? Okay.
Cuz, you know, every, every place I've been, there's a sponsor for the resolution and/or the ordinance. Um, but, you know, we have to take baby steps first, and, uh, you know, we, we've been taking baby steps. Can I bring up, um, just one thing before I forget it? Um, Mayor, um, I will be getting to you, and you can deal with this in your committee. Also, uh, a prototype for street naming and monuments that we talked about the other day. Um, so that you guys can, can, you guys, so that you as the council can have the opportunity to make a determination of how you want to deal with those types of things. Um, because we have to have it, we have to have a procedure for it because trust me, I've seen it get out of hand. There are some places where every street corner has a monument and another name, uh, and it's extremely confusing. Uh, and, and basically, those things are given out as political plums or, or patronage types of things, uh, and you don't wanna do that. So.
Well, remember, Mr. Martin talked about the bricks at the park. That is like such an excellent idea.
Yes, agreed, agreed, agreed.
Um, Rob, what are you gonna, you said you're gonna provide a procedure for street naming?
Yeah, I'm gonna provide, and what it is, is you actually, you know, the entire procedure is you, you have a committee that's set up specifically to determine and take, to take those applications and to review those applications to see they, if they fit into your set of criteria. You know, and as I've said before, I always recommend that, that any of this street naming and those other monuments be posthumous. That the person be dead, number one, and then number two, they have made a real and significant contribution to the community, not just that, oh, everybody liked, uh, you know, Old Yeller or whatever, you know, name Old Yeller Boulevard. You know, that's a, the nice thing to do, but, but, you know, that's, that's a big honor and it should, it should reflect something that the person has actually done for the community.
Rob, when, when can you have that to, to council?
Friday.
All right, um. We've got a lot of, um, I call them action items tasks that, that we have to go through, so. I am putting together all the notes that I took in this meeting. Um, I'll, I'll extract the task that I captured, put them in a section, put the owner's name and the due date. So I may be reaching out to, um, each one of you. If you have a specific task that you have to complete, I'll reach out to you, you know, offline and get a due date from you so that I can include it in the notes. So. All right, is there anything else? Sean, you shaking your head?
Yes, um, I just wanna remind everyone that, uh, now that cannabis has been regulated for Pens Grove, the applications actually open up tomorrow for throughout the state of New Jersey. Um, I did have a chance, uh, yeah, the, the applications open up, the applications open up tomorrow. Um. The applicant needs a letter of support from the governing body. Uh, there is a mistake on there. I'm gonna tell you about this anyway, but just, I'm just gonna say first, there's a mistake, but it will be fixed, um, by tomorrow morning. If you go to the borough's website, uh, www.pensgrove-nj.org/cannabis, you'll see some basic information, and there's also an application for people who are interested in getting a letter of support. Um, I'm borrowing this from, um, the process that Atlantic City is using. Um, I was able to inform Mr. Tarver about this earlier that they have some pretty good, they have some pretty good, I, I like the way they're doing this. Um, so anyway, so there's an application, and then, um, that we had to get from application phase to an actual letter of support from the, a, a letter of support. So I, I would keep that, I would just say, keep that in mind. I would actually recommend a committee. Um, even if it's a small committee or a temporary committee to go over these, but also keep in mind that these, this, the applications in New Jersey are rolling. So it's not, so the application opens December fifteenth, but it's not a deadline, so this will be ongoing. This will be going, ongoing really perpetually.
So when I, so a lot of, naturally, a lot of, um, interested companies are reaching out to me, sending me emails and stuff like that. I've been diverting them to you, Mr. Brown, and Sean Smith. Who is the appropriate person? Because in my opinion, before we can offer a letter of support, don't they need to give us some type of proposal, some type of presentation, like?
That's, that's what, yeah, right, well, that's, that's what the application calls for. The application calls for all that information. And, and by the way, there's, there's also on top of that a five hundred dollar application fee.
Maybe not, they, they just threw that today. Yeah, there, 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 there's some changes that just happened just today with.
Well, now, is this based off of case law or, or what?
No, no, this is based off of, 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 of state regulations. They just, just changed something just today. I was just in a meeting earlier, but, but that, you know, and, and, and that's something for the council to understand. A lot of this is still very fluid. You know, um, and, and so, you know, we are, we're kind of, just like everybody else. We are kind of flying by the seat of our pants with some of it, and some of it may be a little unsettling to you because we're always used to a process that's set, but the process is being set as we go relatively, so, you know.
Two things that I learned in the, um, there, there was a panel dis- discussion. And what is not settled is if you have a vertical integration company, whether the two percent was at every level or just at the end product. And the other issue that was not settled was the one thousand foot school, drug-free school zone, whether that applies to cannabis, which is legal in New Jersey, but not legal in federally. So that was two issues. The panel had two different positions on both of those. And the other thing is, did Mr. Brown come back to us with the survey of what areas were suitable or what properties? Oh, sorry, yes, the other Sean. Yeah, Mr. Smith, did, did we get a report back on that, which areas were suitable for the criteria?
Well, that information is more useful for, for the applicants. Um, because.
Well, it's useful for us too.
But each, each type of applicant, each type of, uh, category has its own needs for square footage, right? So retail parking is important, but for cultivation and manufacturing, parking.
That's what he was looking into. That's what he said he was looking into, that the bigger, um, items.
So, I, actually, oh, look, I have it right here. Um. So I, you know, this is, this is notes on every, 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 I have noted every section to every building that every applicant has posed interest in, and then notes on what's good for what. Um, Sean.
But we have that one. We have that one. I remember seeing.
You don't have this cuz I, I'm the only person who has this. No one, no one else has this. This, the, what you have is nothing but, it's just addresses.
Right, the addresses.
Well, anyway. I don't wanna skip the, the bigger point, which is that, Mayor, um, the government can act as it wishes, but my recommendation or suggestion is that there's a committee, uh, 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 maybe a cannabis committee to review, to review the application once they come in.
Is that us or is that planning?
No, it's, it's, it's you. It's, it's, the letter of support is coming from the governing body.
We need to, we need to establish a cannabis committee of council members, is what you're saying?
Yes, because council will, council will, will, um, be the ones that give the letter, so. Or the governing body, I should say, will, will give the letter of support, which is a part of this, this CRC, the application that goes to CRC. All right, so let, let, let me, let me break this down a little bit in simple terms. I wanna come to Pens Grove and put a retail space. I went to Realtor.com and I identified a space. I talked to the private owner and said, hey, can I, can I buy this building so I can make it into retail for cannabis? They're like, absolutely, you can have it for a hundred thousand dollars. I'm like, you know what? That sounds really good, but before I pay you a hundred thousand dollars, I need to make sure that the, that the borough's okay with this. So now I go to the website slash cannabis, go all the way to the bottom, I fill out the application, asking the basic questions that all of us would be interested in knowing. That application is done. Now, if the application is done and I see it, I'm like, you know, you, you totally skipped the part on this, and, you know, you have this whole huge red flag here and blah, blah, blah. Um, then that might, that might end it right there. But if everything is fine, then, then that deserves to, that deserves a hearing, and that deserves a, a presentation to somebody in the governing body who, who can then, as you guys talked about earlier, say, this is a company, we vetted them, and now we're ready to offer a letter of support, so this applicant can then submit their application to the Cannabis Regulatory Commission.
I have a question.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
So, so the, the applications for the state are starting tomorrow. Mr. Tarver just indicated that the, the fee, uh, issue um, needs to be resolved at the state level, but what you all had just mentioned like ten minutes ago was changing ordinances for application and fees, so now we, we need to put people's heads together and get them all in the room on our side. Um, understand what these applications are, and we don't have a, one, a process, two, a committee, or a fee for this?
We have a process.
Did I miss anything?
No, we do.
Well, the process, the process is, is, is basically gonna be this. When, when you're talking about the, the support mechanism or, or being a, supporting a project, it's, it's not really so much a letter of support as it is a resolution that's presented saying that we support this particular individual or this particular project. So in that regard, it's gonna flow pretty much like any other council-related type project. The question is whether or not we wanna have an administrative process, and I think what, what Mr. Brown is suggesting is that we, we need to fine-tune the initial process of how we're going to deal with these things, so that it just doesn't all end up in front of the council and then, or hear council deal with it. I think what he's saying, and, and I don't wanna speak for you, I think I am speaking, uh, or, I understand what you're saying, that there should be a, a process with criteria from the beginning, when they get the application, someone, whether it be a council committee, to sort it out and say, this meets the criteria, and then pass it on to the council, not necessarily that, hey, we want this version or we want that, but to pass it on and say, this does meet the criteria and let the council make the decision. That's, that's kind of what I think we, we're, we're gonna need to do, but yeah, uh, quite frankly, uh, uh, um, Director Rivera, because things are so fluid with the state, we're kind of like, you know, at, at, at their mercy too, at their fluid, fluid.
Well, I, I, that is, and I just learned this today, there's a guide that the CRC created just for, for this, and it's called, um, Notice of Applications and Acceptance for Personal Use. And on that, on page fifteen and sixteen, and I'll share this to everybody, on page fifteen and sixteen, it gives guidance to municipalities of what's, which, of, of, um, how to get to the, to the letter slash resolution. And, and funny enough, Mr. Tarver, in certain sections, they refer to a letter of support, and in other sections, as you just noted, they refer to a resolution. It's one and the same. Um, um.
But either way, that process has to come by way of resolution because the entire council has to agree that that's where, that's where the support comes from. So, so ultimately, it, 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 there's no other way for council to agree except by resolution.
So AC, so let me ask you, so AC created that application. Then what did they, well, you know, what their process is in terms of review and how it gets to, uh, eventually into the letter, to the letter?
Well, I mean, I don't wanna take up everybody's time here today, but we just had a meeting today where a person just contacted the administration and, and the, the process was not well-honed, and we ended up giving a resolution of support for, for that particular person today, uh, you know, in a special meeting. Uh, 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 we're, we're still working through the process ourselves over in Atlantic City, so.
Can you send us the best thing that you've seen so far?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Mr. Mr. Brown.
You say the best thing that you've seen is already on the screen? Uh, is that what you're trying to say?
Excuse me, can I go?
It'd be rude to say no.
Do you guys really need to go?
That's right. Um, I, I think we're done, aren't we?
No, I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, I know you're talking about putting together.
I'm gonna go. I'll see everybody tomorrow.
Okay.
Good night.
Good night. Good night, Sharon.
Um, I'd like to volunteer.
I can.
On the committee.
If we need people for that, for that committee, I'll join that as well.
I'd volunteer also.
Okay, all right, cool. So I got Charlene, John John, I'm sorry, Jonathan, and Rambo. Okay, cool. Thanks, guys, cuz I was about to add. Okay. Cool. Thanks, guys. Cause I was about to ask that before we hung up.
This is, this is fantastic news. And, and I, I, I just, um, because I met with some of these people earlier today. Um, oh, oh, let me, let me, and, and I, and this way, this way, this last, I promise the last thing I'm going to say on this. This is time sensitive because if people, if they see, if the industry sees we're dragging our feet or we don't know what we're doing, they'll just, they'll at least attempt to go somewhere else. But so far, they respect the professionalism that we brought to the table and, um, in our, in our, very interested in, in, in being, in being partners. They, and, and, um, they actually asked the question and I'm going to ask this to you guys. Oh, oh, this is fun. You guys, oh, you guys will love this. We need to create a list of community needs. What's everything? It's like a wish list for Pens Grove.
Well, I fuck with that.
Lease cars, community center. Huh?
I wish our meeting was one hour.
Me too.
Yeah, yeah, well.
The, the pumping stations are the obvious thing and the bulkhead. They're the, they're the biggest need that I see in the whole town.
Right.
If we're flooded, we can't do anything else.
What might make sense with that, with, with what Mr. Brown is saying, is for each of you to come up with your own list of what you think is a priority. Because, you know, if, if we do it in committee, then we kind of just all meld together with the same idea. But we do it individually. Say we, I'm talking about you. If you do it individually, you'll all have your own concerns and, and it'll be more diverse. So I would suggest that, that, that you make your own wish list individually and, uh, do it that way.
Okay.
Yep.
I already have mine together. Okay. All right, can we, can we, um, in this party?
I make a motion. End this party.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Two hands up.
It's a good day, everyone.
Good night.
Darren, you're supposed to be gone.
Yeah. Couldn't get out without ending the meeting.